All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order for Monday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilken.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Are there any corrections? If there are typos or grammatical errors, please email those to the clerk, but if there's substantive errors, please, please let us know now. Okay. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Correction.
Sure.
And it's bad.
Go ahead, Grace.
Okay, sorry. Um, a small correction on the four public input presentations for first followers presentation. There, we need to include James Kilgore as a speaker, and I think remove Angela O'Neil did not end up speaking.
Okay. So we have James Corbin, Josh Payne, and James Kilgore.
Yes.
Okay. Any other corrections? Right? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilken.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item are additions to the agenda. I have none. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and public input. I don't believe we have presentations tonight. We'll move on to public input. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Uh, first up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Uh, just a heads up, I've been promoted to panelist for the public comment. I'm not sure if that's intentional or not, and I will not abuse that space, but just letting you know. All right, uh, my name's Alan Max Axelrod. I'm the campaign lead of No Amber Shutoffs, a zero-dollar coalition of now fifty-two member organizations spanning the state of Illinois, North, South, East, and West. We have been organizing for fifteen months. Fighting for basic, common sense pandemic protections that are documented by even the Congressional Research Service in a two thousand and seven Congressional Research Service report entitled Pandemic Influenza and Analysis of State Preparedness and Response Plans. Table eight specifically mentioned the continuity of essential services such as public utilities. This past Thursday, we disrupted Governor Pritzker's press conference in Bloomington, Illinois with a message. Stop evictions, stop utility shut-offs, you work for us. That message was deliberate. He can stop evictions, he can stop utility shut-offs, and based on the disturbing trend in the UK with the Delta strain A Y point four point two, despite an eighty percent vaccination rate, they are seeing an increase in COVID cases and deaths. In Illinois, as of Friday, we had a fifty-six point five percent vaccination rate. That's lower than Florida. Florida has sixty point nine percent of a vaccination rate. They have a roughly twenty-five million population. If you were to actually multiply that percentage times their population, you know what? They vaccinated more people than who live in the state of Illinois. This is the leadership of Governor Pritzker. This is the same caliber leadership of the person who came to Champagne, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, and lied to the public, saying that he did not have the ability to stop utility shut-offs. The resolution that was passed by the city of Urbana on April twelfth, as well as the resolutions that were passed in Bloomington and in Peoria, included a, the exact same thing that was in that October twenty-seventh report that cited state statutes saying that the governor could stop utility shut-offs. Legal counsel checks the validity of those resolutions as part of the process. These are facts. This is the situation that we're dealing with. Now, the Delta A Y fo- four point two, botched the name, forgive me, it doesn't roll off the tongue, is not singularly responsible for the increase in the UK's coronavirus caseload and deaths. What they did do was they reduced their universal credit program by twenty pounds at the end of September, and then their COVID caseload increased. You see a pattern here? Let's reflect again on what, to me, is obvious, but you all may not have absorbed yet. The Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program, which paid people's utility bills automatically if they were a vulnerable household that had received a utility subsidy in the last three years, ended at the end of June. The coronavirus strain of Delta had been in our state since April, according to the Illinois Department of Health. We had our best COVID caseload days in May and June. But in mid-July, two weeks after the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program stopped, that's when our COVID caseload started to increase. We've had a daily, a seven-day average, over two thousand cases since August third, representing more than fifteen percent of our cumulative caseload. Have a good night.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Please raise your hand. Uh, Kanita Fay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. Okay. We can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kanita Fay. I am a resident of Urbana. I would like to start by thanking all of our elected officials, city staff, and citizens for working together to make Urbana a great place to live. During the last meeting, there were many meaningful issues discussed. We citizens would like to share our perspectives and offer our support. First, the issue of communication. We appreciate that both executive and legislative branches address the need for better communication. We urge that you kindly and proactively communicate with each other. Then, inform us, the citizens. We will be glad to do whatever we can to help increase communication within our community. Second, the issue of priorities. We are glad that you mentioned setting priorities, and we believe that it would help Urbana be more effective. We understand that majority of the council member are new, and you are trying your best to be considerate and careful. However, when it comes to handling emergencies, like the gun violence crisis, we would like to see decisive action. Hundreds, if not thousands, of citizens are waiting to hear from you and would like you to show that you heard their voice and that you understand the gravity of the situation. Here's, here are some of the questions that we heard time and times again from the, um, council meeting, and we getting a little bit frustrated to hear the same question. So we're gonna wanna share with you what we think about the question, um, that brought up. Question one. Would this investigative tool target certain communities? In reality, the communities came to you and asked for help finding an investigative tool because witnesses or victim can, are afraid to provide information for fear of retaliation, not the other way around. Question two. Would we spend taxpayer money wisely on this tool? We are looking at approximately fifty-five thousand dollars a year, not millions. If you can possibly save someone from getting shot or killed, would fifty-five thousand be worth it? Question three, privacy. We are talking about public safety, not the privacy of our own home. The purpose of having license plate is to identify a vehicle. Driving is a privilege. We simply cannot drive without accepting responsibility to our society. Plus, public thoroughfares are exempt from privacy in public safety situation. Third, the issue of transparency. It is very important for citizens to understand the issues. We thank you for organizing the town hall. However, since some might have to work two or three jobs and might not have the time to wash, we ask the city to please share some of the slides via social media. When it comes to time to vote, which is next Monday, we ask council members to give us reason why you voted in way. We citizens deserve explanation and need to know your reason. We need to know if you truly understand the complexity of the issue. For example, homes in one and two might not be affected by shooting directly, but all the students came to the same school. Thank you very much for your consideration, and please engage us in your communication priorities and transparency in your work. You can email me. I would email you, uh, my letter right after this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Brandy McCoy.
Hello, my name is Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. Um, I just wanted to hop on and, um, also kind of echo the urgency, the importance of, um, utility disconnections. Since July, there's been three hundred thousand homes in Champagne County disconnected, um, to a utility, and I mean, that's just not pandemic safety, right? Like, those are basic needs that we all need to cope and, uh, do what's best for our own health. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Please raise your hand. Okay. Um, Angel Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. Yes, I have, um, a lot going on here that I'd like to address. First off, I'd like to address the last meeting that you had. You, uh, Sheila Mann. I have worked with her. I have asked her for help. We opening up businesses, and we have owned businesses for years. So we have three different companies. Sheila Mann told me that they didn't have any, they didn't have any, um, money for us to open up our business, and Sheila Don told us they didn't have money to open up our businesses. And I was listening last week, and as I was listening, you have a whole economic team. You have S B D C. I worked with Don Elmore since October the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, not knowing that you guys had collaborated together and have the same information, and I didn't know. I was talking and dealing with the same people. This is crazy. I had to do my research myself to find out, and then I was listening last week. All these great people brought up. We opened up this business. We have this business, and then y'all brought in casinos and, 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 and you bought in those liquor stores, and, and, and you bought in those new people on my taxpayers' dollar. And I'm, I, and y'all spending my money to get a salary off of me. I own my home since two thousand and five. How do y'all think that make me feel every time I ask y'all to help us with our business? Oh, where was I counseling at? Why you never introduced me to the counseling people, Sheila Mann, Don Elmore, Sheila Dos? Why even Sheila Dos? I had to beg and pull teeth. Me and her had a conversation on the phone because she was trying not to help me get my mortgage paid from the pandemic. I had to pull teeth. My mortgage people had to be on the phone with me to get her to understand. We need our mortgage paid. But all the time she had the money, but was not gonna give it to act like she didn't know what she was doing and didn't have no money. Sheila Mann sent me over there, telling me it's a restaurant in Urbana, but we don't have money for you to open up a restaurant. Then they turned down our precious daycare license. And for your information, our books are in order, always out there. We, we've been in daycare for ages, for years. We got hit by the pandemic just like everyone else did. All this time, I've been coming to y'all since Laurie Preston and Brandon Boy. And y'all wouldn't send me to these people that do the bridge. I just found out about the bridge. Really? And y'all bringing people in here on my tax dollars, and I'm paying y'all to sit on that, uh, city council board. I want somebody look like me on that city council board. That acts like me, that's gonna be honest and treat every culture the same. Y'all have raised your profile that's too long, and it's getting ready to stop. And anyone listening to this wanna help me fight and make sure that African Americans get the same respect and privileges as any other white person. Is Champagne a better place to build it? I have a building, eight oh nine, Dennis and Row, and Don Elmore been working with me since last year of two thousand and twenty. I'm talking to eight, look it up. She never gave us any information. Sheila Mann never gave me any information, how to get my business started, how to help me open up this restaurant. We done did pop-up show in Marwale.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Your time is up. Thank you.
You knew it too.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to council input and communications. Grace.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, off of that last public input comment, that I, um, agree and have come across with some investigating and some productive conversations with the public and with staff, and I agree that there seems to be, um, a hole, kind of a hole in the system for non-brick-and-mortar businesses in Urbana, and it sounds like there will be an opportunity to address that for next year, moving forward, and have a public hearing to get some public input on that, hopefully council input as well, and, um, I just want to say that I hear that comment, and I agree that it's something that we can look into in the future, and staff, um, seem to be accommodating and encouraging of that as well, and being open to that public feedback. Um, so I hope that that's the case, and we can have some assistance for non-brick-and-mortar businesses in Urbana, and whatever kind of business support that we can, um, help provide or facilitate for new businesses, especially ones owned by people of color, women, or other, uh, minorities, or disproportionately historically challenged groups in society. So I hope that we can work towards that.
Okay. Anybody else wish to have comments tonight? James.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I'm, I'm having a chance to meet with, uh, Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association Steering Committee, uh, this week, and I look forward to getting their input and, um, hope to bring anything back to council that they, that they raise.
Okay. Thanks. Sharice.
On October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, at around one thirteen PM, Champagne Police responded to the area of Town Center Boulevard and North Prospect Avenue for the reporting of a shooting with injuries. Officers located twenty-four-year-old male inside a vehicle with a single life-threatening gunshot wound to the head. The victim was transported to local hospital where he remains in critical condition. At this time, I believe that it is an unknown offender that did the shooting. On October twentieth, a young woman was shot and murdered on her way home. This also happened in Champagne at around ten thirty, thirty, uh, ten thirty-seven PM. The police responded to the two hundred block of Kenwood Road for the reporting of a shooting with injuries. When the officers got there, they located a nineteen-year-old female with life-threatening gunshot wounds to her lower neck. The Champagne Police and Champagne Fire Department gave aid and transported her to the hospital where she succumbed to her injuries. And that's all I'm going to say right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole. Jaya.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, um, we didn't have anything on the consent agenda, but the first item that I'd like to recommend is, for approval, is Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-one dash one zero dash zero four four R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement, Champagne County Economic Development Corporation, F Y two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Shandra. Any discussion? Grace.
Thanks. I wanted to, um, bring up the idea for consideration for possibly amending the motion, if there's council support um, for this and the next item, to reduce by five thousand each for the contribution, since there is an extra ten thousand from, from my understanding, what was agreed on and what was paid last year, and that this extra ten thousand each is from funds that had previously historically gone to the Urbana Business Association. Um, I think that that would be a good compromise, because we'd still have a five thousand dollar increase on both of these agreements, and that would leave us ten thousand dollars to go towards other businesses that are led by people of color that work in the same industry and provide similar services, and, um, a little more looking into it. Bi Black Chambana and the Black Chamber of Commerce each have a five thousand dollar membership. So with those funds, we could become members with these other organizations and support more, um, instead of just these two, and we would still be increasing our contribution, um, because I do support these organizations and their efforts that they're doing, and I would also like to support other organizations that are doing similar things. So I'm wondering thoughts on that, um, if there's, uh, general support, and if we're interested in changing the motions accordingly.
I would second.
I would be happy to amend my motion to reduce the amount by five thousand dollars so that it could be allocated for supporting, uh, another. I don't know how you phrase that, another entity, um, like Bi Black Chambana or the Black, whatever other one you mentioned. You mentioned a couple different things, sorry, but I'd be happy to amend my motion.
Mary Alice.
Um, so, so typically, in, you know, as we see in these tier agreements, it's a long process in order to gather the information um, for us to be able to look at any kind of agreement, and I would like to suggest that if it is the will of the council, that this be, um, discussed for next fiscal year. This would give us an opportunity to look at different organizations, um, and to be able to craft something similar, because I think it would take time for that type of process to work, so I, I would be in favor of thinking about it for the next fiscal year, but I'm not in favor of doing it this year.
Any other comments? I'm looking for other council members first. Okay. Shandra.
Um, so yeah, I'd be happy to support something like that, and I understand, uh, Mary Alice's point about changing things at the last minute and what complications that could, uh, produce for staff, but if, um, it, it, I'm sure Grace probably had a conversation with, you know, staff to see if it's even feasible, and it sounds like maybe it is, or otherwise, maybe we can figure it out. Um, I don't think that if it is too big of a weight to carry or change around this time, we can consider it for next time, but I think it's definitely something we should explore right now.
Well, I can say I was not, um, made aware of this proposal ahead of time. Is Stephanie or Carol, did you discuss this at all?
No, we didn't. It's, it's, it's really, if I could just interject, it's a two-part question, really. One is reducing the amount to go to these entities, and another is deciding wh- where it should go. Um, you could see from the, um, agreements that we put in front of you, that we, you know, we, we have a, a kind of robust relationship with these entities, and we have, uh, specific expectations of them. I don't know what's involved with the other organizations and what they offer in term, you know, through their memberships. So, you know, to me, it's a two-part question.
And it's not just a simple matter of reallocating funds to another organization. You need to have, um, a great, an agreement put into place, expectations, and understanding of what the organization is capable of doing, and, um, expectations. So this is not something that really should be done on the floor. And as we pointed out last week, these two organizations have played a critical, crucial role in helping us navigate the pandemic, and that's why we recommended an increase in the contribution. In fact, in years past, the contribution to Visit Champagne County was much, much higher than, than twenty thousand dollars, and it was reduced, it was zeroed out, it's been, it's been all over the map. So twenty thousand dollars represents a fraction of what it used to be. Visit Champagne, or, uh, Champagne County Economic Development Corporation, um, is, um, close to what it historically has been. But again, these two organizations have performed in, just, I, I, I can't begin to tell you the service that they have provided to the city and the people of Urbana over the past two years, and to summarily just reduce it on the floor is really not fair to them, or frankly, to the people of Urbana. We are getting way, way, um, more in service and, and, um, support than what those dollar amounts, um, reflect. If you want to consider for next year or over the next six months, because really, we'll be starting to put the budget together in just a few months, start developing metrics for considering supporting other organizations, that would be fine. But to amend this on the floor is just not, really not good policy or practice. James.
Yeah, I'm certainly supportive of looking into, um, developing support for these other organizations, but I am not really supportive of, uh, reducing the proposal in, in the city council meeting. We, we had representatives of those groups, um, if there was a concern about what we were gonna invest in them. Um, I think that should have been brought up at the, uh, Committee of the Whole. Um, I, I won't, I won't support the reduction, but I would support our development of other groups to, um, invest in.
And again, this proposal was not communicated to anybody on the staff in advance of this meeting. Grace.
Uh, thank you. I do realize that this is, um, a little late in the game, but, um, you know, we really just have a week or two, so this was things I've been thinking about this week, and I do apologize that it is short notice, um, just with life and other jobs, and I've been thinking about this and having conversations. Um, and I had to talk with Stephanie McMahon today. Um, it was, you know, again, late in the game. Um, but what I took away from that conversation is that logistically, um, that would be possible, and that we could look into partnering with some of these other businesses in a similar fashion. And I definitely understand supporting these organizations, but again, to have it go around a little further, especially if these funds are coming from the Urbana Business Association, I would just be interested in spreading them out a little more, um, between some other organizations, again, who are doing similar work um, that are led by people of color and don't have that kind of universal support as much, as far as I know. Um, and I also had a question about how E D C and Visit Champagne County, like, how that relationship came to be? Like, was there a request for proposals and other Like, was there a request for proposals and other organizations had an opportunity? Or would they approach the city if they're interested in this? Um, kind of like, how did that happen, and how would it happen with other organizations? And another important point, too, is that I don't think that we would have the funds to do both necessarily. Um, I'm happy if Steph, uh, wants to jump in, but there could be some other stuff moved around. But this is what was in the general fund from our business, Urbana Business Association. So this is the kind of twenty thousand that we have a little more discretionary. And so if we spend it all now in these two places, then that doesn't leave money for this unless we take it from somewhere else.
Stephanie, did you want to speak?
Yeah, and Grace, I emailed you some information probably about five thirty, quarter to six. There were additional U B A funds, and there are some still in, um, the general fund that we'd allocated toward activation, that we were going to try to fill in some of the things, um, U B A couldn't do, such as marketing campaigns, banners, um, maybe some small events. So there are additional funds sitting in the general fund that we were going to use for activation that, um, if you wanted to go ahead and give this money to E D C and V C C tonight, and then we found out within the next couple of months, um, that you wanted to give to these other organizations, we could, I believe, do a budget amendment to, um, put the money out of the activation line that we had it in into, um, a contribution line that we, similar. So there are those funds that could be used for that instead of for activation.
And again, some of the questions that need to be answered is what will these other organizations provide for the dollars that the public invests?
Absolutely, and we would want to make sure the other organizations were nonprofit organizations, as are E D C and V C C. So, um, so those are a little bit of research we do want to do and see what the benefits, uh, we would get for a contribution from the city.
Mary Alice.
Um, the other thing to think about, and I appreciate that Grace brought to light these two organizations, but there could be other non-for-profit organizations within our community that are, um, working with, with different populations that we don't normally, uh, fund. And so I think that it would be appropriate for us to think a bit more about that, all the, look into the different kinds of organizations that deal with businesses that are non-for-profits. And, uh, rather than, than decrease these amount now. I mean, the, the, one big issue is, and I'm sure everybody's learning this, it takes time to get things done in the city. It's not, it's not a quick process. Uh, so if, if we are going to investigate other support for small business, uh, organizations that some, support small businesses, I think we need to take a step back and think about what are all the different places within our community do that.
Any other council comments? Grace, and Shandra.
Thanks. Um, I definitely understand and again apologize for this coming so soon. Um, I don't know if there's a deadline on the contract or if there's any interest in sending it back to committee for any more thought. Um, just some things to consider is, I would also like to not forego the downtown activation. I would like to do that as well. With E D C and V C C, also the way I see it is that this increase doesn't make a difference in the tier of Urbana participation or benefits directly. I understand that more funds can, you know, help the organization and help Urbana that way, um, but it wouldn't be any concrete, like, increase in our membership. Um, and instead, a fraction of that could go to making whole new relationships and memberships with other organizations. Whereas here, um, I just, I would love to know how the five thousand dollars, um, you know, it feels like it could have more impact making a new relationship with that, and still continuing these relationships and increasing our contribution, and having new relationships and keeping the downtown activation.
Again, I think these are two separate issues, and it's going to take time to develop a relationship and determine who the relationship should be with if you're going to expand this type of membership. But we have a longstanding relationship with Visit Champaign County, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation. We know what we are getting for these funds, and again, what we get from these two organizations far outweighs the investment that we're making into it. Champaign has a relationship with Visit Champaign County, um, and they take a portion of their hotel motel tax, and it's significantly higher than what Urbana invests. So I, I urge you to stick with the original agreement. We can discuss, um, a process for developing relationships with other organizations. But you're, you know, you're talking about taxpayer dollars, and you need to make sure you know what you're going to be, what, what expectations are, and what you're going to be getting for the investment that you make. So we have a motion, um. I need to hear the motion as amended, and we'll need to vote on that. Was there a second on that?
I believe Chris, uh, seconded the amendment.
So please restate the motion.
Which is, yeah, the, I don't, yeah.
Are, are we, I just have a quick question. Do we have an amendment to the original motion? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I believe we do.
Sure, I'll go for it, see what happens. Um, yeah, motion for, um, approving this with a reduction of five thousand dollars. So it would still be five thousand more from last year, a total of three thousand, uh, or sorry, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars for E D C.
Seconded.
Uh, will the clerk please recall, do we need a roll call on that amendment, Phyllis?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Okay, that amendment passes four to three, and then we'll go to the, I guess, Jaya, actually, this is your, this is your committee report.
Hey, um. So the next resolution, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, my internet's cutting in and out.
That was only the amendment that we voted on, so we have to.
So you'll need to vote on the main motion.
All right, um. So do I just restate the original motion with the amendment then?
Yes.
Okay, um, so on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, um, recommend, uh, for approval as amended, um, Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash one zero dash zero four four R, Resolution Improving and Authorizing the Execution of a Community Partnership Agreement, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, F Y twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
And then that was seconded by Shandra. The original motion, all right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Our motion passes. Next item?
Uh, next we have Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash one zero dash zero four R, Resolution Improving and Authorizing the Execution of a Community Partnership Agreement, Visit Champaign County, F Y twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? Shandra? Discussion? Grace?
Um, I'd like to make a similar motion to amend this one, uh, to fifteen thousand.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Thanks.
I'll, I'll say once again that I'm, I'm frustrated that this kind of change is coming at this, at this point in time. Uh, the information was available to have a discussion about this in the Committee of the Whole, and, um, it's just, uh, not a good way to do this, to have this discussion when, uh, the, the group that we're working with isn't, isn't here, uh, to say something about it. I really, uh, don't quite understand if this was a thing that just happened today as a decision. I don't, I don't really believe in, um, making changes on, on a whim like that. I do, I do understand, um, the merits of what you want to support, Grace, but we talked last night, you didn't even ask me about thinking about doing this. So it feels like this is something that just happened today, and I don't, I don't think this is a good way to do this. Thanks.
Jaya.
I think, um, and perhaps this applies for the last one, too, um, even though I know we've already voted on it, but setting some sort of timeframe around this so that if there isn't a clear way of, of allocating these resources to other sources, or it's determined that there isn't another good place, right, if there isn't a good way of investing, um, as, as Mayor Maryland said, taxpayer money, um, in other ways of supporting our community, uh, deciding what that process looks like for either, you know, reinstating this for, for these organizations, or deciding what that process would look like might be an important piece of this as well.
Well, here's the thing. Number one, this is a very disrespectful way to treat organizations that we have a longstanding relationship in our community and that we depend on in our community. And, um, number two, this was, there have been budgeting around the expected dollar amount. So to pull the rug out from under them at this point in time is highly irregular and just plain disrespectful, and it kind of undermines people's trust in the city of Urbana as a community partner. So this isn't something that should be done lightly or at the last minute. Grace.
I was just going to say that, that it makes us look as if we, um, negotiate in bad faith when we do this. And it undermines the trust that, uh, not just this, these organizations, but any organization in dealing with Champaign, Urbana, um, with Champaign, with Urbana in particularly, sorry. It makes it look as if we, um, we don't follow through with what we say we're going to do. And it, it just increases mistrust that, uh, a certain population, uh, of people already have in government to, um, to negotiate and to, to get to do, uh, partnerships with other organizations. Regarding, and I want to say this in, 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 as a aside as well, regarding, um, I get what you're saying, Grace, as far as other entities and other businesses or other business models. There, you know, this, uh, V C C in particularly, um, has worked to, to in, increase the, um, uh, what's the word? I, I'm having these senior moments now. Has worked to try to in, increase the, the, uh, uh, what, uh, black ownership, especially online stuff like Black Chambana, um, has done. And at one time even provided a link on their page to buying Black Chambana. And, um, the, um, author of that didn't appreciate it. Says she didn't want that, and so they took the link off. And, um, they had to have, there was a, uh, I know there was a discussion of sorts and a, and a somewhat of a mediation between V C C and, and the owner of, uh, By Black Chambana. So, um, that may have been, you know, helpful to you before you, um, put that information out there, uh, regarding that. What V C C does is, uh, promotes, that's, I guess that's the word I'm looking for, promotes businesses within Urbana so that it, it's kind of a one-stop-shop kind of a place for people to go to. That's my understanding, especially with their online, um, uh, their website and such. So, um, I think that doing this at the last minute is, is not, um, conducive to, to us actually getting other businesses or other business models or organizations to actually work with us. If this kind of thing can happen at a whim.
And I'll, I'll say one more thing. We have worked extremely hard over the last four years to rebuild relationships and strengthen partnerships that had been damaged over the past years. And this action tonight is a step backward. Mary Alice.
So I just want to give some context for some of the new city council members. Um, as, as Diane had said, these organizations work on their budget. Um, and, you know, throughout the process, we have always discussed these types of issues, um, in terms of allocating, allocation of funds to business organizations during the fiscal year budget process. So the example I wanted to give you is, is that, you know, U B A, uh, Urbana Business Association, so U B A, there was a discussion about limiting, lowering the amount of funds. And at that time, we were talking about that, U B A came and told us the impact of what that would do to their budget, because they were working on their budget. And I just, I think it's very, it's just not fair. We've already allocated this in our budget. Um, I understand what Grace is trying to do, but, but we're making a decision that should have been made, if this was a concern, that should have been made months ago. Um, and I just, I, I don't think it's the right direction. We are right now trying to figure out what does the continued pandemic mean on tourism in our, in our area? And that's what V C C does. They help bring in, uh, different, um, different events. They help bring in and, and go out and try and recruit people to come and hold their conferences here. Uh, so we're really limiting the ability of this organization to be able to change how we're doing that and how we're managing ourselves throughout the pandemic. So I just think it's a mistake right now, um, and I guess I've said my piece.
Okay, we have an amendment. I will need to vote on that first. Will the clerk please call?
I think Grace has it. Her hand up.
Grace.
Thanks. Um, I definitely agree with, um, it being kind of late in the game and last minute, and would have been better to have this beforehand. Um, I would say for me, it's, the final decision about whether to bring the motion or not, um, did come more today, but it's something that I have been considering and thinking about for a long time, um, back to last year when I watched this contract, um, agreement with Visit Champaign County last year, and some of the issues brought up with, um, how they're using By Black Chambana's, um, listserv. And so I also did bring it up last week. I said I would like for some of these funds to go there, um, in kind of an abstract way without really knowing how to do that. Um, and I have had some conversations this week and just today that have kind of further developed this. And I'm curious about them already counting on this funding, because my understanding was that this was an increase from last year and what was kind of expected and already budgeted. So my understanding was that we, like for Visit Champaign County, we allocated ten thousand, and now we're giving an extra ten thousand. So in my mind, this was not cutting our contribution, it was just reducing the increase. Um, and I understand that it can, you know, look bad that we're going back on some, changing some of this stuff late in the game, and I agree, um, but it can also look bad that we're only supporting some of these organizations in this field and not others that are led by people of color, and I, I think that also looks really bad, and I have some concerns about. And again, I agree it's late in the game, um, and I wonder why we haven't, as a city, considered this before. I agree that this conversation, um, could have happened months ago. I just became more aware of the issue when it was in our packet last week, and then we talked about it. Um, so we kind of have, in my understanding, that week between Committee of the Whole and Council, when at least I really understand an issue and have time to follow up on things. So again, I apologize for that. I agree it's late in the game, um, but I think also, um, when will we do it then? It also seems strange to me that we would increase the giving and then potentially cut it the next year. To me, it would make more sense to, like, incrementally increase. Uh, that's all for now. Thanks.
Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Well, the clerk, please call the roll. Yeah, Jay?
Jay has a.
I just wanted to jump in quickly and, and kind of reinforce something that Grace said. I think it is important not to complete, uh, uh, opportunity to expand how we are supporting our community with not supporting these organizations. Um, I think the work that we heard about last week, there's no doubt that it's important and it's valuable. I agree this process is not where we want it to be. I think we continue to see these issues with process, and we've all discussed the need to work on that. But I do want to clarify in trying to actually live what we say in terms of speak, uh, supporting, um, businesses that are run by people of color in this, in this community. Sometimes we have to be bold, um, and sometimes that is not done in an ideal way. But I think it's also important not to suggest that that doesn't mean supporting VCC, um, or, um, the Economic Development Corporation, because it's not that we don't see their work or value the idea of increasing those contributions, but saying perhaps not this much at this time.
Any other comments? All right, you're voting on the amendment. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
And now you'll vote on the main motion.
So the motion for approval was for resolution number twenty-two-one dash one zero dash zero four R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement, Should Visit Champaign County, FY twenty-two-one, twenty-two, as amended.
Second?
Mr. Mr. Quisenberry?
Shandra seconded that one.
Yeah, yes, my second.
Yeah. Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. What did he say?
He said yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Um, and then finally, on behalf of the committee as a whole, I have a recommendation for approval of ordinance number twenty-two-one dash one zero dash zero four-five, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four-three, increasing number of R and T dash two liquor licenses for Hari Om Urbana Inc., DBA Rosati's Pizza, Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Is there a second? James?
Yes, I seconded.
Discussion. Mary Alice?
I just, uh, wanted to comment that I was very pleased to see that Rosati's was reopened. It was closed during the pandemic, and I believe the business was sold. So I want to thank, uh, the applicant for reopening a, a well-loved business in Urbana.
Any other comments? James?
Yeah, I think it's worth reiterating for the public that when Rosati's closed, it did change ownership. And so the, the liquor license that was originally with Rosati's in the previous ownership went away, and a new owner has to reapply. So that's why we're doing this, this, this same establishment was serving liquor in its previous, uh, iteration.
Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, that completes the committee of the whole. Reports of special committees, there are none. Uh, reports of officers. Um, don't see any. I had a couple of announcements. One is that we received from the Secretary of State's office, the official census numbers for the city of Urbana, and they're very disappointing, as you've probably heard. Our official census number population is now thirty-eight thousand, three hundred, thirty-six. That's a two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen decrease compared to our official twenty-ten census of forty-two thousand something, or forty-one thousand, two fifty. Um, we're evaluating our options. They asked, the options include, um, doing a special census in specified, uh, census blocks. We're looking at that. The earliest that could be done for a recount in those areas is twenty-twenty-three. Um, this will also have an impact on ward boundaries, which need to be redrawn. And I'm arranging for a presentation to council in a few weeks to give you an overview of, um, implications of all that. But anyway, it has been officially, um, entered as thirty-eight thousand, three hundred, thirty-six. It's a seven percent decrease. If it stands at that level, we stand to use millions of dollars over the next ten years in federal and state funds that are allocated based on population. So these numbers mean a lot, and it's devastating to the city. James?
Diane, have you been able to look at the, the track-by-track comparison yet? And see if there's some really clear places that look like areas?
Yeah, and, and we'll, that'll be part of the, the report that you'll get. But yeah, it's mostly areas closer to campus, and there's some really things that stand out, like ISR was half of the, just half of it was closed. So there's hundreds of students weren't living there at the time of the census. And it's clear that this was, to me, it was clear it was COVID-related when students, a lot of people left campus right before the census was taken. So, so we're not the only college community. Um, others have experienced similar declines like this. And, um, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear we're going to have to do a recount. But you have to be very, um, strategic about that, because the city pays the Census Bureau to do the recount. So it's benefit cost ratio, but, but, um.
And what is the earliest we could do that? Is it two years out?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's not that far away, but, but, uh, but it means a loss of significant revenue. Okay, next announcement is, um, Thursday.
Diane, I think Chris has a question.
Oh, yeah, Chris.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Diane. Uh, so how likely is it that we would get, see an increase if we did a recount? Is it pretty likely?
If the students are here, yes. If the pandemic is over, yes.
Okay.
This town emptied out. This town emptied out in, um, late March and April of last year. And that's exactly when people were supposed to be counted. And despite our best efforts at reminding students that they should fill out the census based on where they were, you know, during the school year, I think a lot of them, uh, went home before that happened. So.
So Diane, do you think it would be worth the cost of doing the recount?
That's one of the things we're evaluating. Yeah. It, it, it's not going to, it's not cheap, but yeah, we'll be evaluating that. Sharice?
And, uh, Chris also, you know, last year there was, there was a lot of political maneuvering by, on the federal level. And we have a lot of immigrants in the community. And I, I believe that, um, many immigrants did not fill out the census because they were afraid of, um, being tracked and, um, not seeing it as, you know, of, as it just being a count and how. And, and I worked, I worked diligently to get people to fill out the census in, um, my ward. And it, the, I, and I did keep track of the track. And we were about ten to fifteen points under what we had done the previous census. So it does make a difference.
The other thing, um, we have several large residential projects, um, have been built and, um, have now, are now occupied, and they weren't last year when the census was taken. So between what we can recapture from the census blocks that are obviously low, and then our new development, um, I think, I think it's going to be worth it to do a recount. But you got to be strategic about block by block which ones you do. And that's what we have to prepare for, one of the many things we have to prepare for over the next year.
And we, and we can do that block by block, so that, that's a choice we can make.
Right, yeah. Okay, um, next up, I wanted to remind you, the groundbreaking, ceremonial groundbreaking for the Hotel Royer will be Thursday afternoon, two o'clock in the parking lot. It'll be outdoors. There will be a tent. It'll be COVID-safe, and I hope you all can attend. We'll have representatives from Hilton there, as well as the operations manager for the project. So, and the, what, uh, you'll be able to see are plans for the interior, um, design renovation, furnishing of the, the, uh, rooms and the public spaces. Uh, third reminder is we will be holding two town halls on the automated license plate readers. One is Thursday, um, in the evening from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. The other one is Friday from one to three PM. Both of these will be at Vineyard Church, fifteen-hundred North Lincoln Avenue. Masks are required. Distancing will be required. These events will be livestreamed and recorded. All the information related to these events can be found on the city's homepage. Click on the icon and it'll take you to, to the links, to the agenda, to background materials and that sort of thing. And then lastly, I want to remind council members who haven't responded to the doodle poll. We are, uh, wanting to schedule the city council priority setting session for December. And I think I've heard from three, three people so far, so please fill out the doodle poll so we can get that scheduled for the council goal setting. Okay, we'll move on to new business. First up is the staff appointment for our Public Works Director. And I am pleased to bring the appointment of Tim Cowan to you as Director of Public Works. And you received summary of his qualifications two weeks ago. Tim has served as interim Director of Public Works and City Engineer for the past year. He has fourteen years' experience before that, working in the public and private sector. He worked for the city of Danville, Illinois, with Farnsworth Group, C Two Engineers, and Donahue and Associates. And he also held a variety of positions, where he held variety of positions related to municipal engineering. He's a great deal of experience in city engineering. He earned a BS in Civil Engineering from Southern Illinois University Carbondale, completed the land surveying certificate program at Parkland College in Champaign. The appointment would be effective tomorrow, October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And Tim and his family live in the city of Urbana. Tim's on. I entertain a motion.
I move.
I will move approval for Tim Cowan as the Public Works Director, um, ending in June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Shandra, did you want a second? I've heard Shandra before. No? Chris? Okay. Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, sorry, I had a quick, uh, discussion.
Yes.
Thanks. Um, just wanted to say thank you for the, um, the bio and the information and having the term listed on there. I appreciate that. And, um, the little bit, the few conversations I've had with Tim Cowan, I've really appreciated what I've seen is, um, really working towards transparency and looking for systemic equitable approaches to our infrastructure. And I hope that continues. Um, and I've also appreciated the reports we've gotten. I think have been very like well laid out and had the rationale. I really appreciated the prioritizing on the street priorities there. Um, so I just wanted to say that I, um, appreciate all of that, and I look forward to, uh, another few years of you doing public works directing. So thank you.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Just for the record, our last Public Works Director was here for twenty-eight years. So we look forward to a long and productive, uh, tenure with Tim. And the last item on the agenda is the appointment, an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. And this is for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And I would like to nominate Angela Urban. She's an Associate Technical Director at the Construction Engineering and Research Lab at the Army Corps of Engineers. She focuses on research for sustainability and technology. She's a graduate of the UIUC Master of Urban Planning Program and is certified as a Lead Green Associate and as a Real Estate Development Finance Professional. As an urban planner and artist, she grew up appreciating art, architecture, and physical cultural preservation. She's worked at nonprofits in both Urbana and Champaign, and she became intimately familiar with the history of our local landmarks. And by joining the Historic Preservation Commission, hopes to continue and extend the work of current members to conserve our city's urban fabric. I entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.